How you doing Bradley?
I'm good. How are you?
Good. If y'all want to throw this on speakers, my man Bradley's beautiful mug a little better if you want to.
I feel like, I feel like I'm at a keynote or something right now with all the people on here looking at me.
Yeah, it's a good thing you took a shower. Or did you take a shower today? Who knows?
I just got back from Mexico, so I've taken many showers in the last.
Scrubbed Mexico off, I guess. Well, we'll, we'll get started here. Just, uh, you know, it's 11:05. I think we've got enough people to get started. Um, what I wanted to do was get everybody together. Y'all want to throw mute?
Brent Jennings over there is stealing my look.
Yeah, is he? I haven't seen this.
With the hat.
Oh yeah, he does. There you go. Well, I think Brett looks better though, I gotta say. But anyhow, so what I wanted to do was have a little collab session, just kind of visit and hang out a bit. Um, and I wanted you to come on a guest with me because, uh, you've been doing some big things the last couple of years in your agency. You've grown a lot. You've become kind of a marketing savant, genius, a guru, whatever you want to call it with your reality shows and your podcasts and whatnot. But before we get started, people that don't know Bradley, why don't you give a brief history, three components of who you are, what you've been doing, kind of your background from captive to independent and what that's looked like for you. Give a brief synopsis on that for a minute.
Yeah. So for those of you that, that, that don't know, which I could imagine is a lot of you, um, I got into business in 2011. At that point I was working at a, a cell phone store, which was, um, those of you are familiar with like Nextel beep beep radios. It was a competitor to that. Basically it's a cell phone that can also act as like a two-way radio. A lot of farmers use them because if you're in a rural area, you may not have cell reception, but you can two-way talk. Um, it's a terrible product. Uh, I was, I was doing that. A buddy of mine came to the office, uh, watched me sell account after count. It was like, hey, man, you'd be pretty good at selling insurance. I was so green that day one, I looked at him and said, uh, what's a full life policy? He's like, you mean a whole life policy? And, uh, so from there I was, I was kind of hooked, um, did really, really, really well. The first six months was going to school at the time to be a teacher. I had made, uh, more money in six months than a teacher would make right out of the gate, which is I think is a travesty. I think teachers are underpaid, but I remember sitting in class, I looked to my left and I looked to my right and I was like, why am I here? And I walked out of a, I walked out of a classroom and have not been back since, except to speak to classes. So, um, went all in on insurance, uh, worked for Liberty National Life for a year. Basically selling life insurance door to door, not really in the traditional sense. The people knew we were coming, but it was very, very, very close to that. Did that for a year. Recognized that PNC was where it's at, you know, if, if I stood on the top floor of the RSA tower here, right down the street from me, which is the tallest building in Alabama, literally everything I can see is insured. But if I went to a football game, not every single person there is going to buy life insurance. So I was like, okay, I'm going, I'm going PNC because the volume is there. And I can use that as a mechanism to sell life insurance. So I went to work for a captive agent as one of their employees. Um, it was, I kind of looked at it as a, as a sabbatical internship, whatever. Um, I went from making pretty good money as a 21-year-old to my salary there was $15,000 a year. And, uh, and I basically had to kill to eat. Did that for a year, really learned PNC, went to work at Alpha Insurance, which is basically Alabama's version of Foreign Bureau Insurance. Um, Foreign Bureau is not in Alabama, so this is, they're kind of like the, the substitute. They have an interesting contract where they kind of put you in the role as an agency principal, but you don't have the responsibility, the overhead and things like that. And, um, did that for six years, really learned marketing there, fell in love with marketing, social media, things like that. Only because I recognized that my competition was not using social media and Alpha at the time had literally that much compliance around social media. So I went all in there and it was free. Um, and I think marketing wise, you have to do one of two things. You either have to outspend your competition or you have to outsmart them. And I could not outspend them, so I decided to try and outsmart them. So went all in on social media. That led me down the rabbit hole of, um, getting a phone call from the Wall Street Journal one day, Wall Street Journal, we, we did an interview. Unfortunately that interview never published, but in that interview, they kind of jokingly said, you're the number one insurance agent on Snapchat, which I said, hold on one second. I'm going to grab my phone and put that in my social media bio. Uh, which was on there for a while. It's kind of a joke, even though they did say it. Uh, my co-host Scott Howell saw that, reached out to me. Hey, this guy's in Alabama. He came to my office. We did a little chit chat for like 30 minutes on camera. We got done. He's like, man, that sounded pretty good. Um, can, uh, you want to start a podcast? And that was kind of like the only thick box I haven't checked at that time. So I was like, yeah, let's start a podcast. So we started the Insurance Guys Podcast just for fun, just for selfish reasons. Like we wanted to get connected with our guests. You know, we, we interviewed people that we wanted to get to know, people like Tom Hagna, Chris Paradiso, Mike Stromso, folks that are like titans in the industry, like, hey, we'll be the cool high school kid hosting the party and we'll invite them over. And then we get to know them and all of a sudden we're in the cool clubs. That's basically what happened. Um, it started taking off and then, uh, basically I got an MBA for a year and a half in how to run an independent agency. Um, we, that, that inspired me to leave Alpha and open Portal Insurance, uh, January of 2019. Um, growing really fast and that's kind of where we are today. You said short, that's about as short as I can make it.
No, that was money. No, I appreciate that. Um, and so you, you kind of talked about you started and went all in on social. Um, when you're with the captive side, as we, we talked about marketing a little bit. Let's focus a little bit on that for a minute, uh, cause I see you everywhere on social. And if you, if you're on social media at all, any platform and your friends are Bradley Flowers, you're going to see him post, you're going to see his information. Uh, talk to me a little bit about what that's meant for your agency, what your strategies kind of are on that and how, you know, maybe some of my, uh, my people on here, you might be, give, give them some advice and give them some ideas on what they can do.
Yeah. I think the first thing you have to do, especially if you're like me and have zero time for anything is to just document what's going on in your life and in your business. That's it. Literally every single thing you do, every single thing I do every day is how can I take this and turn this into a piece of social media content? Bottom, bottom line. Make sense?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. No, I'm with you. So, and is that kind of where, you know, the making the donuts came from? If you haven't seen, he's got a YouTube show called Making the Donut. It's kind of a pulled back curtain view of what goes on in his agency. And what you're doing. Is that something?
Yeah. So it's, that's, that is, um, our, our, uh, my great white buffalo was to always have an in-house media department. That way I didn't have to do everything myself. Um, so we have a full-time videographer here in the office. He's actually sitting right here filming. Uh, we film everything and then at, and then take out the stuff that we can't. And then at the end, not literally everything, but, but in the general sense, compared to most agencies, we film everything. And then at the end of the day, at the end of the week, that all compiles together in our weekly vlog that, that we call Making the Donuts. Um, which is a, uh, uh, to me a perfect title. And we try our best to make insurance fun and make our office and culture look fun. And, and literally everything, every single thing we do in that, um, is real, like it's real conversations. There's nothing this staged. There may be some like, oh, let me say that one more time and get that on camera, but literally every single thing happen. Uh, happens. And, you know, like we had our team meeting was in, I think the last one and the week before, like it's a real, the soundbite, it's a real team meeting. And I'm doing it for a few reasons. One, uh, the, the insurance industry loves it. Two, um, it's really, really good for business because other business owners here locally watch it. And then when I meet with them about their insurance, like, hey, I saw last week where you're doing this, da, 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 right? Um, it's a good way to promote our culture for recruiting. There's local insurance agents right now that are interacting with it. That I'd know if I sent them a message and said, hey, you want to come be a part of this? The answer would be yes immediately. So it's good for recruiting. And then lastly, it's going to be really, really, really cool for my kids and my future grandkids to be able to come back and wow.
All right. That sounds good. Uh, anybody before, I don't want you to speak about me and Bradley talking, y'all watching. Do y'all have any questions, anything related to marketing, sales? He's in a rural town as well, like we are. Um, he's in Alabama. He can speak the same language we do, or most of us in the South on here. Uh, any questions you have at all, uh, before I keep going with him? Anybody have any questions? I'll pause for a few minutes.
Hey, and by the way, I just put a link to all that in the chat. So.
Sweet.
I, I got one for Bradley. I guess kind of not much silly question, but for everybody who hasn't caught his pieces of.
Recognize that voice.
Hey Bradley, uh, if you haven't, you know, listened or watched any of his pieces on starting a local niche podcast, um, that's, that's extremely important. So I think Bradley, I know you've kind of, you know, still doing, kind of doing yours here and there, but the making the donuts is kind of priority to you. Um, but kind of explain a little bit of, of your, of your process and the reasoning why starting a local niche podcast is extremely important.
Yeah. I think if, you know, we have a, we have, I have a side business that we help insurance agents create content. And, and in that, through that process, I have, um, insurance agents that come to me, some of them kind of already know what they want to do. They just don't have the time to do it. And some of them have no idea what they want to do. And usually when the agents that come to me say, I have no idea what I want to do. What do you think I should do? Um, the, the answer is always you should start a local podcast. Or if you're not local, if you sell a niche national, if you're in a niche nationally, they'll say you do trucking nationally. I would start a trucking podcast. Then literally the framework for that is what we did for the Insurance Guys Podcast. You do the exact same thing. Uh, we do that here locally. We, I have a local podcast called Centers of Influence. Um, that is more of a case study to prove to everybody that it can be done. Where literally what we do at Centers of Influence is we interview our commercial insurance prospects. And I think it's the most practical way to generate business online that is not super long-term. And so I think everybody should have some sort of podcast in their niche or in their local area with the goal of becoming the news source for that town. And I think people in small towns have the biggest opportunity with this because, you know, the town I grew up in was 8,000 people. The town I live now is a suburb of a big city, but the town I live in now is 14,000 people. We don't have a local newspaper or a local news source or anything like create a show. And by podcast, I don't mean just audio. I mean video, any kind of show, right? Um, I don't want to say show when I, when I give the example because it, it gives a, I think it indicates it's something bigger than it is. It's just you on camera or on mic, talking to somebody about your, your community or your niche. And I think it's a really, really good way to become known. And, um, and have people reach out to you and, and what's going to happen? Let's say you do this and you're interviewing local business owners that you want to ensure, right? What's going to happen is the people that you interview, um, they are going to be super appreciative, right? I'm of the belief that there's no bigger ego boost than being interviewed on a podcast. Like this feels really good for me to be on here right now. And I'm really humbled. There's this many people on here. Um, so that's good. Business owners you interview are going to feel really good about that. Doesn't matter if you only have 20 listeners. They're going to feel really good about it. So they're going to be somewhat indebted to you. And then at the end of that conversation, once you're off camera, hey, would you mind if I quoted your, your insurance? I know it renews on this day. And they're going to say yes, unless you have some sort of ulterior issue, like a brother-in-law issue where the brother-in-law has the insurance. For the most part, they're going to say yes. Worst case scenario, you're going to get X date. Every now and then you'll get somebody that's really a jerk and is like, no, I don't want you to do that. And you don't want that person insured anyway. So that happens. The second thing that happens is you're going to have other business owners that reach out to you and ask you to come on the show. Do people reach out and ask you to come on the Insurance Town Podcast Heath? Absolutely. I know they do. You don't have to answer that question. So people are going to reach out. They're going to say, hey, I would love for you to interview me on your show. I do this, 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 this. And not that you would go this literal with it, but you can say, hey, Rick, would love to interview you. The cost to do that is a deck page. Let me quote your insurance. Right? I wouldn't do it that way, but just to prove a point like that's, that's the cost of entry, right? And then the last thing that happens is you're going to have other business owners that watch it. They're too shy to maybe reach out and ask to come on, but they're going to watch it. And then the next time their business insurance comes up for renewal, you know what they're going to say? They're going to say, oh, let me reach out to that Mitch Gibson guy. I see his podcast there. We're going to happen to know he does insurance. And let's say you crap the bed and none of those things happen. You're going to build a whole lot of local awareness for yourself, your agency and your community through doing that podcast.
There you go. That answered your, uh, your question there Mitch. I know Mitch, uh, Mitch is on, he set himself up because Mitch got his own local podcast idea from Bradley. And he's, uh, closing on a large, what's that closing number on the?
Mitch has a freaking TV show.
He does.
Okay. Literally, literally Mitch started this and now has a TV show.
On two different networks, two different channels.
That's correct. No, I think the big thing, that number 70, about 70, 75% Heath. Um, but it's, it's also just like Bradley said. Put together your, we all have prospect lists, so it's using that prospect list and attacking those, going after those, those businesses that you know were one, have a, have a really good interview that's going to speak a lot. And then two, one thing that I try to identify, and even if it's someone I'm not trying to write, is try to identify who those local businesses are that have really good followings. Like the local coffee shop that I interviewed, uh, the local barber that I interviewed are my two best shows because they have two, three, four thousand followers on Facebook and Instagram. So I knew that I was going to be able to reach more people by having those people on my show. And when they share it, I mean, it was just going to blow up. And those were my numbers did really, really good was when I had people who really engaged in use social consistently and had them on my show, knowing that I'm going to get that same, and you know, return on investment when I, you know, have them on my show and tell them to share it and comment on it.
Co-tail. It's, it's co-tailing.
That's, that has been extremely helpful and, and Bradley said the TV show. Um, it's, it shifted that way. And, and I focused primarily on the video aspect to make sure my video looks really, really good and audio sounds good as well. Because I'm, you know, the, the big place where it's being shown is on a couple of different local television stations. So that's my big focus. But in return, you know, like Bradley says, it's not just that the podcast itself or the show itself, that's going to do really well. It's being able to ask qualifying and good questions from that, from that interview, or that person you're interviewing or from that guest. So you can turn those into pieces of content for social. That's, that's the huge, huge portion that people don't understand when they start these shows is okay, my show's done. I'm done with this, this whole entire show. Well, no, you can go back and listen to that 45, 30 to 45 minute episode and should be able to break small pieces of content into that that you can tag those businesses in throughout, you know, sporadic years of one, two, three years. And it's all going to be relevant stuff. It's just being able to have a good system, systematization. I know Bradley, like you said, he has, he helps other insurance agents out with content. That's exactly what he's dealing with that. They're taking that episode and putting it into 50 different pieces of content, getting it back into your hands and you can use it for social.
Well, what happens is that that 30-minute episodes becomes the epicenter of your agency's entire marketing strategy. Because within each 30-minute episode, there's, you know, he's filming this right now. At the end of this, there's going to be at least 10 soundbite clips that we can use as standalone pieces of content. So that's how you really do this is you have one pillar thing of Making the Donuts or an Insurance Guys Podcast and everything else is derived from that. You know, and, and the, uh, it's just, it's just, it's a really good way to, to do things. Um, there was a point I was going to make Mitch, but I forgot. Anyway. Sorry Heath.
I'm here to, I'm here to help you, help you push that way.
No, you're good. Um, does anybody else, uh, you know, have any other questions, uh, that they want to ask as well? I want this to be an open forum for anybody to talk. If you have any things that you're doing, marketing wise or social media wise, um, if you have any questions, let me know. If not, I'll make a call one of you out or I'll keep asking questions.
Actually Bradley, a couple of comments. Uh, first off, congratulations. I think it's awesome what you're doing. I, you know, back when I sold insurance, um, one of the things that, uh, you know, I always focused on was trying to be the best in my industry. What I think is really unique about what you're saying is this leads down a different road. In my mental, uh, thought process of when I was selling insurance. You could build this exact podcast, not necessarily for your town, but around an industry. And I think if you get a very specific industry, specific, uh, podcast, that's really going to drive into, you know, what you're really doing. You know, me personally, when I was doing insurance, it was all car dealers. And, you know, I'm thinking right now, you know, in California where, where we, you know, where I really ran my business, um, there were literally 10 of us in California, in all California who did car dealers. We all knew each other and we were always fighting against each other. And we always had to have something over the other person to try to set ourselves apart, which led me down my road of what I did. But to have something like that and to generate this, this cool, uh, podcast around content that may be specifically insurance related. As you're interviewing, you know, clients who maybe are having issues, how they dealt with it, the carriers that they were dealing with, whatever it may be. You know, I, I think that's a fantastic concept. I mean, I think really, you know, a great job. I mean, what a great idea to be able to.
You can become a thought leader. You can become a thought leader in that industry.
Absolutely.
Sorry to interrupt you. Well, yeah, it's, it's, I talked to a guy recently, or say recently, it was about a year ago. And he was like, man, I really want to break into contractors. I was like, dude, like every industry has a Ryan Hanley. Every industry has a Heath Sharon. Every industry has a talking head, someone that's, someone that's really known. Go find those people in construction and interview them. And what's going to happen is, is all of that expertise is going to fall down on your shoulders and you're going to be looked in that regard as well. And you will become a thought leader in the construction industry. Could you imagine a better way to sell insurance to contractors?
Yes, it's fantastic. I mean, just getting your name out. I mean, the number one, number one goal is, is finding the opportunities, right? So how do you find opportunities? That, uh, you don't have to pick up the phone and call, right? And, and my business was driven around word of mouth, you know, so if you could expand that word of mouth and get these, you know, a business owners to follow you and listen to you, even in a short-term basis. I mean, man, it's just, it's a home run. Uh, and they're really going to feel, you know, your passion to their industry, which I think is huge, uh, in any, any sort of, uh, operation you're running. I mean, you really have to have that passion. I mean, we used to go down the road of, of going directly to the, um, associations and work deals with the associations to build these programs and then pass it down. And then that way we had a lock, we had a, we had our doorway, but to take to that next level and really create the show and not have to go through an association to let them find you for a different reason. Well, that allows you to pull other people, maybe in association program and out and into your own program that you may have. And talk about the important needs of the different insurances, uh, be able to cross-sell, uh, and really expand your book of business, business. Cause I think it's just a, just stellar idea. I mean, again, great job to you. And, and I think it's a pretty fantastic.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
I'm going to interrupt.
I like, I like questions.
Well, I guess this can like, kind of lead into a question for you too, I guess Bradley, but, um, one thing that's been really a home run for me is when I'm targeting specific businesses. So with my local podcast, right? So I ask a series of five questions, not the front, I have to, but at the end. And they're all questions like, what's your favorite place in Hancock County to shop? What's your favorite place in Hancock County to go eat at a restaurant? Favorite fun activity? Cause what that does is that gives you to take that two-minute clip. And when you post it to social, you can tag those three or four businesses that he said in. So what you've done there is you just continue to build that authority and ask that, you know, guest to share his favorite things. And in return, those people that you tag on social are going to see it and probably share it. That's already a warm introduction. They know who you are by this before you even go talk to them. So I think that's the same thing with what you see.
The first 10 to 20 guests of the Insurance Guys Podcast were very, very, very strategic. We, we interviewed people that had followings and genuinely wanted to interview them, but we were very strategic with who we interviewed first. As you can co-tail, you know? Everybody has that person in the town that's very influential and is a center of influence. And everybody knows, you know, I'm, the guy's name popped in my head right now in my town. Like go interview that person. Like it's not, it's not going to hurt, you know? We interviewed on Centers of Influence. We interviewed a local radio DJ. Right? People listen to her. So that, some of that audience transfer is over. We interviewed, uh, the Savannah Bananas. If you're not familiar with them, they're coming here to put on a, their one city world tour. We interviewed the owner of the Savannah Bananas. It's an event that's coming here. It's getting attention. People are going to be searching for it. We're going to come, they're going to come across Centers of Influence. We were the first media outlet considering us, putting us in the category of media outlet. We were the first media he did when he announced that they were coming here. That wasn't because he reached out to Bradley and said, hey Bradley, I want you to be the first media we do. It's because I reached out to him and said, hey, as soon as you're announcing this, tomorrow, let's do an interview and let's get it out. You know, as soon as the announcement, they announced it, we posted that. So like, you have to be very strategic. You can't just like shotgun it. You know what I mean?
Yep. Uh, anybody else jump in there before I keep going? I like this.
What's our stop, what's our stop time?
I mean, I have it for an hour, but if we run over, when we had Chris on, we ran over an hour and a half, but, uh, as I see this participation's drop, we'll just start, uh, wrapping it up. But anybody else got any questions on here? All right.
Bradley, equipment, equipment. People think that they got to spend a lot of money on starting their own show. I mean, to be user.
You can.
What, what, what do people, what, I mean, you can realistically record from the phone.
Centers of Influence, we, we literally use a camera. That's it. Um, just to prove that you can do it low budget. You know, the setup I'm using right now, it's making me sound syrupy sweet to you guys is, uh, $600. Um, so that's like top of the line mic, top of the line audio interface. But literally you can do this on your cell phone. Um, if you want to spend a little money without going crazy, there's a device called a Zoom H6. It's about the size, and I think they came out with a new model recently, but it's about the size of a cell phone and it's a, essentially a studio in a box. Um, it will power this microphone, but you don't have to have this microphone. It's got a built-in microphone. If you listen to the Insurance Guys, um, we've interviewed Tom Hagna twice. It's the second Tom Hagna interview, which was actually about a year ago. All we had was the Zoom H6 sitting in the middle of the table in a broom closet and it sounds like we're in a studio. And it was just picking up us. So that's literally all you need. Um, if you want to put it on a podcast platform, you, there's a program called Libsyn, L-I-B-S-Y-N. Um, we don't use that one anymore. We swapped over to one that's more expensive, but all you need is Libsyn. Um, so yeah, it's, it's very low budget. It's, podcast does have a barrier to entry and the barrier to entry is you have to figure it out. But at the end of the day, all you need is social media accounts and iPhone and a tripod. Not an Android.
Um, so as you've, you know, done your insurance podcasts and you've grown and had some really cool guests on, I've listened since day one. And I've always been a fanboy. Um, and then I started my own obviously, but, um, you've had some pretty cool guests on there. What, what tech have you picked up? Or what things have you picked up marketing wise that's helped your agency grow? Cause you've had some pretty rapid growth in the two years you've been independent. And I have a feeling all of that's because of the, the advantage you've had of having those guests. What piece of technology or what things have you done? And we've got some, some cool people on here. I know we could shout out Ron Schroyer. I've seen him on here. He's.
I was about to say Arius Analytics, just, just because, um.
But you know, I don't want to guide you in a certain direction, but, um, or leave anybody out, but I know there's some stuff on there that you've picked up that you've used or not used.
I don't know that it's one piece of technology, um, because there's no silver bullets, right? When I worked for Alpha, I used to go to, uh, the home office once a year and talk to the new agents, new agent school. And I used to love that. And my mission was to destroy any dreams they had of any silver bullets, helping them be successful. And let them know it's going to be the hardest thing they've ever done in their life. Um, and I firmly believe that like, there's no, there's no one piece of technology that I use that would make me more successful. Or you know what I mean? Like there's things that make it easier. You know, I think what people, side note, agents, all of us are looking for that shiny object, that silver bullet. There's no such thing as a silver bullet. And chasing shiny objects is going to get you in trouble. We need, instead of looking for new tech, we need to ask our current tech to do more. We need less tech that does more. People, people consider that, like I've said that several times and I always get comments and reactions where people think I'm like anti-techno. It's not an, because the, no offense, but the older people always come out of the woodwork, the, the more tenured agents. And they're always like, yeah, less tech. And I'm like, no, 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 no. Less technology that does more. You know, I don't need 15 tools. I need four tools that do the 15 things, right? But side note, but back, back from that, I think the, the, I haven't learned about one thing that's like helped me tremendously. Um, tools like Arius Analytics and Tarmica, I'm a big fan of. Um, I think are going to take over the world when they're adopted at a, at a, at a substantial level, at a mainstream level. Um, what I think I've gotten the most from the podcast technology-wise is the, the biggest misconception about me is that I'm tech savvy. I'm not tech savvy. I'm just not scared to ask people who are tech savvy to show me how to use something. And so I don't think there's been one thing, but I think it's allowed me to run in some circles that I can be around the top of the top people technology-wise in the industry, agents. The top of the top people, technology wise in the industry, agents and non-agents. And people like Ron Schroyer, and I can say, hey, how do you do this? Tell me, tell me how to do this. Tell me the best way to do this. So I think that is, is the most important thing. And that kind of plays into the less tech that does more, because if, if we do have to have more tech, we can figure out ways to make it talk to the other tech, you know? So I hope that makes sense.
Hey Bradley, I have a question for you. Um, first off, I love that hat, man. And uh, any way we can get your hands on will be good.
Speaking of Ron Schroyer.
Nobody gets, nobody gets the black ones but me. I don't know if anybody's noticed that. I have blue ones. Nobody gets the black ones.
I do like it, man. It's sharp. Um, when you're looking at, because you, you were in the unique situation to be able to really almost start your tech suite from scratch. There's a lot of legacy agencies that it's a, it's a big train to get to slow down, to be able to understand what direction should we go in when it comes to what technologies we're investing in? How do you make those decisions if you have such a, a kind of a larger organization or a mid-sized organization that has all these legacy technologies? And even if you unplug one of them, the effects it's going to have too. And there's so many different technology companies out here like us and Tarmica and everybody withstanding. Just how, how do you just decipher where you're going to go, how you're going to do it from both a, a scratch agency, but also for an existing agency tool?
So like how I'm going to, what tech I'm going to use and how I'm going to get it to work with the other tech?
Yeah. And on top of that, just the evaluation process, because there's so much out there. And I know you have to kind of listen to the guys you mentioned, like Stromso and Paradiso and all these guys that are out there. I know you, you kind of look for those, those forward thinkers that are on the edge of certain things. But you know, a lot of people aren't like that. Um, so.
So it could also be overwhelming.
That's a really, that's a really, really, really good question. So I don't jump on the bandwagon of um, some of the newer stuff that's coming out until after everybody else. If you see me jump on the bandwagon to something really early, like a Tarmica or like a project neon or you guys, it, it, it means I really believe in it. Um, I tend to hang back and, and see where things go. So that's like number one, number, so I try my best not to get shiny object syndrome. Um, number two, and this is a personal, this is a, you know, ask any organization. If their goal is to be acquired and they're all going to say no. And there's the people that mean it. And then there's the liars. Um, they're not going to tell you the truth. So make your best gut determination. For me, I don't want to do business with a vendor, especially one that I'm tied to, like a management system. And then get an email one day that says, congratulations, you're now a part of XX organization.
Yeah.
I don't want, one, for the fact that, hey, I chose not to do business with this company. I'm not going to do business with a company that's going to sell to that company, right? So that's number one. Number two is, I think, I think acquisition is good. I love all the M and A activities going on in the industry right now. So happy for my friends that are now multimillionaires. I think, I think the goal of acquisition as a business, no matter the business, I think making it your goal to be acquired or to have an exit. Is not a great thing for customer experience. When you make it your goal to be acquired, you are going to subconsciously or consciously take your eye off of the customer ball. And the reason companies like Amazon are winning is because they are putting all of their attention on the customer. Nothing else matters. Jeff Bezos does not allow his leadership team to look at the stock price day to day. Because he says, if you're 30% up, you're going to feel 30% better, which means if you're 30% down, you're going to feel 30% was worse and neither number matters. So if you make it your goal to do that, it's going to lead to some not so great experiences. How does that show on the agent end? Well, we all know those vendors that we've suggested changes to over and over and over and over, and we're seeing no adoption whatsoever. They're not listening to feedback. So I look for vendors that I think are not going, or, or, or don't have the goal of being acquired. They have a goal of improving their system and making it amazing for the customers and the agents that use it. So that's, that's a big thing for me. Big, big, big thing for me. Um, I want them to be, I want to see earlier iterations of the product. And I want to see how they've, how they've developed it. And if they've taken in agent feedback. Not to give a shameless plug, but a company that we've recently done business with is Total CSR. I saw Total CSR a year ago and I saw it a couple of weeks ago and I was absolutely blown away. At how much it had changed in a year. It's agent feedback. And I talked to the owner yesterday, uh, Justin Goodman. He's like, agent feedback. We took agent feedback. We improved the platform. And so to me, that is very, very, very important. And then the last thing that I look at is, is aside from little things like cloud based, you know, they, we, we don't do business with anybody in this agency. That's not going to let us operate on a Mac. Um, the question you want to ask for that is, are you on Google Chrome? If they're on, if it's on Internet Explorer, it's not, that's not a good rabbit hole to go down. Um, and, but the last kind of big thing is, um, I want that system, it has to talk to my other systems. If it, you know, technology is designed to eliminate work, not add to it. And if, if I enter something in my management system, it needs to reflect to the other system. It doesn't need to add more entry. If it adds entry for anybody, it needs to be me, not my team. Double entry is going to be the death of the independent agent. We've got to get our systems into place where we put something in here and the information flows everywhere else. So is, if it can have some sort of integration with a real two-way direct integration, not uh, hey, you put something here and it's like, like a real like information flows back and forth. That's like almost as key as number one, because if we have number one and number two, but we don't have number three, I'm probably not going to opt in. You know, I'll pilot stuff that doesn't do that, one of those things, just to kind of see, you know? Um, but it's, it's very, very, very important.
Bradley, this is Kim. I'm, I'm going to just show my age just a little bit whenever I say this, but that's been the biggest battle in the independent insurance agency side. As long as I've been in the business is that everything is duplicate or duplicate entry for no matter what you do. So the best thing that you can do is to find the system that integrates with everything, which is, seems to be impossible at this point. But that's, if, if they could ever get it right on the automation side, that would make a huge difference. And that's from my job, if I work with a captive agent that's going independent, that's their biggest downfall. Is that they, they're used to one entry, one billing, one claim, one product, one whatever. And then they come to the independent side and they've got 10 of everything. And they don't, it, it's, it makes them crash because they don't understand how to make it all flow together. So that's. So from the time that I started insurance back in 1922. Of course, it, it's, that's been our problem for the, all, all these years. And if you can figure out a way to do that, that's a genius, genius thing for the industry as a whole.
Yeah. And I think, I think we're, we are. We have the best shot now of anytime ever of everything working together. I think agents just have to make the right decisions as it comes to technology. You know, our systems talk, everything, everything we do talks to the other system. And if I can do it with my shoestring budget, if I told you all the amount of money I had when I started my agency, everybody here would pass out. If we didn't write business like month one, we were going to be in big trouble. And it was at that point, it was like, hey, let's just put enough business on the books where we can sell it if we have to. So if I can do it on a shoestring budget, anybody can. And, and I agree with you. Um, one of the big mistake, I talk, I have a lot of agents that reach out to me and say, because I used to be captive. Because we started the podcast when we were captive, I think we're the only major insurance podcast that has both captive and independent listeners. Um, we understand that there's something for everybody and independence is not the only way. Um, I have a lot of captive agents reach out to me and a lot of agency producers reach out like, hey, I'm going independent. What I need to do. I think the biggest mistake I see agents making it when they go independent, and I've had, I mean, I've seen really good agents make this mistake. They've been locked in these chains where they couldn't, couldn't do what they want to do. And now they're not, and they go out and they do business with every damn vendor under the planet. Every, hey, we get this and we get this and we get this and we get this and we get this. And then all of a sudden, like three months later, their tech stack looks completely different. And you have to, I think you have to start slowly and you have to say, okay, all right, I need a, I need a management system. I need a CRM. There's, there's no agency management system out there right now, in my opinion, that has proper CRM front end and sales tracking capabilities. So I need a CRM to help me track my sales before the close. I need those two things. I need something that lets me do automation. I need something that lets you do text, email, and then build it out from there, right? You don't start with everything and then work your way backwards. You start slow and build yourself up.
You just need to add just bits and pieces as you go, as you need it. I, I think that that's the biggest mistake that startup agencies, and I work with a lot of startup agencies and those startup agencies, they think that they have to have everything that they had whenever they worked this large agency before they started their own. And that's not necessarily the truth. I think that smaller is better, just like you said, less is more. And you just work individually with what you have going on with your agency and add as you go.
Uh huh, exactly.
And I, I think if I could add just one thing to that, Kim, and I love everything you're saying and Bradley, same thing is like, I think the technology companies that are out there. I mean, as, as you and Heath and everybody knows, like us, Tarmica, you know, the guys at agency zoom, Better Agency, all these different tech companies, we're all good friends. Which is awesome because it, it really helps because we all have this common goal of like, kind of building out that connected ecosystem that everybody is kind of yearning for right now. Um, and I was on the flip side. I mean, I, my last company got bought by Vertivore. So I knew exactly what Bradley was talking through on that side. Um, I had a great time at Vertivore. I mean, they treated me well, but I understand kind of that.
They're good people.
They are. They certainly are. But I mean, it, and they have a business to run and they're very smart how they ran their business. And obviously the way they've sold the last few years, it, it has done uh, what they set out to do. But when it comes down to your last point about flipping profits and everything else too, money's obviously important, makes the world go around. But when you get the acquisition thing out of your mind, when you just understand what you're passionate about, what you can be, have a dramatic positive effect on. Money will follow. Um, if you're doing the right things with that. So I think that's the cool thing about the industry now is there's so many awesome tech companies out there and everybody's willing to work together. Even if there's like overlaps in a little bit with everybody's products, because they know together for the agent at the end run, it's going to make everything stronger and that much more compatible. And, and all these earlier stage companies too, have the flexibility to be able to integrate like that. And it's, it's really, really fun to see.
Yeah, yeah. And there's, there's a trend I'm noticing too, in the industry, some of you, if you watched Making the Donuts last week, I think I talked about it in that. Where, you know, you have these, you know, you have these insured tech carriers, right? That are coming on the scene and some have been around for a few years. And it's just a matter of time before a few of them get it right and don't burn out. And sell or disappear or whatever, and become the next travelers or nationwide or auto owners or Cincinnati or whoever. Um, and you have these insured tech carriers, and then you also have these awesome CRMs, some that you mentioned. I'm noticing a trend where I'm starting to see an inkling of these insured tech carriers who have the APIs. The CRMs who have the APIs. The APIs are what allow the systems to connect together. The problem comes with the connectivity with the management systems. And the carriers, the traditional carriers, that's where the problem is. Okay? So what, what I'm noticing happening is some of these insured techie carriers are going directly to the insurance CRMs. They're bypassing the management systems. There's a few now that have, I've noticed it like bam, 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 like three in a row, like in one week, I was like, oh, I was like, is this the revolution? Is this, is this how things change for the better? These carriers say, hey, we're just going to connect directly. We're not worried about you guys. And granted, it would take a long time for that to really have an impact, because you have thousands of carriers. But I think there's a real possibility here for, you know, I'm going to be honest with you, like if portal insurance has three commercial carriers, three home carriers and three auto carriers that connect directly to our CRM and bypass everything else, that's the only carriers we're going to use. That's going to be number one, two, and three, regardless of price. So I, I think that's a good indication of where things are going. And it'd be interesting to, to look back on this, this, this podcast a year from now. Um, and, and, and see where we stand in.
Yeah. I wanted to jump in real quick and ask, well, I've got, I'm looking though here, I've got, we've got Ron's already talked, let's see, I got Togo on here. And Scott both have companies in this kind of space. Just real quickly, uh, Togo, if you want to jump in or Scott, what does that look like from your end? As you both got products that, you know, have to integrate with these systems. Is it something easy to do, something difficult? Togo, why don't you jump in first?
Yeah, he, he, thanks for shouting me out, man. Yeah, I appreciate it. Uh, hey, everybody. Um, I, I definitely see a bunch of familiar faces in here. Yeah. I mean, I, I, I love that we're talking about connectivity here, because that, um, that's something that's near and dear to our, like my heart a lot. And uh, and, and you know, like what, what we essentially set out to solve with Canopy Connect is solving that connectivity problem. And for us, the way that we solve it, I think there's, there's multiple sort of facets to it. There's not like a silver bullet. But um, the, we, we found a very powerful angle, which is consumer consent and consumer permissioned access to data. And um, and so that's, that's our entry point to accessing data. And the way that that works is you're insured, look like you're insured in your interests, like uh, there is a lot of alignment there. You both want the process to be easy, right? Like I think everybody can agree on that. So your, your insured knows that they need to share some information with you to get a quote, right? Like if they're reasonable at all, uh, they know they need to share some information with you to get a quote. Um, and then you need information from them to, to, you know, to get the, the quote and to understand what they need. And so there's an alignment there, right? You both want that to be easy. You both need that data to move from one place to another. And so, um, and so all that legally needs to happen is that, that consumer, that consumer needs to say like, I want, I want to provide you the, the authorization to access my information. And here's what you can access. And then, um, and that, that is like, all that's needed from a legal framework. And then the rest is just like connecting the, you know, building the technology to connect the information from those pieces. And so that's what we've done. So you know, we connect, like what we've built is the easiest way for an insured to share their information with you. And we do that by connecting with the carrier. Well, we, we have like a one click process where the consumer, uh, you know, gives us their consent to pull their information from their, from their carrier on their behalf. And they get that over to an agency, like let's say like portal insurance, for instance, right? And then, um, and then in the click of a button, all the deck pages, vehicle information, driver information, everything goes directly to, you know, the customer. So like, let's say portal insurance and then, um, not that they're, not that we're working together by way, but just to give you an example. Um, and then that's it. And so we, you know, all, all, all the information is, is being pulled by us and then we're structuring it. And then, uh, and we have an API. So I'm glad we're talking about APIs. And so we have an API now that we're, uh, that our customers are already like building like instant quoting and instant like thing, instant like experiences off of pulling somebody's insurance information off of a click of a button. Um, but then it also allows us to integrate with the Raiders and CRMs and the other platforms that we're all talking about here. Um, because you know, yeah, I, I don't, I think I'm kind of preaching to the choir when I say like, everybody knows like all the tools that are out there in, in the insurance space for agents. Like, like a connectivity, connecting one to another is a huge problem. That's why like Zapier is doing so well, right? Everybody is just like gluing stuff together with tape and shooting and stuff.
Zapier and Zapier, by the way, is not a good long-term solution. There was a time where all agents wanted was a Zapier connection, you know? Um, I, I'll tell you one thing I like about Canopy Toga is, and I, and I followed you guys for a while, uh, or kept up with your growth. Is it's one of those tools that when you use it and your competitors see it, they're like, that rascal. Like they know exactly what you're doing. And it's like, it's one of those things is just like, it, they can't bring themselves to do it, but they're going to hate on you for doing it, which is no, that, that should tell you that's exactly what you need to do.
Yeah. But I think, I think there's like, there, there is like a lot of work still to be done. So you know, I think we've made a lot, we made a lot of strides for sure. For us, like we're, we're really focusing now on, um, not only improving our API, but also like going out and not now, now that you have an API, now you have a technology, right? But then you also, there's, it's still a people problem. Like you have to go and establish those relationships now between the, the companies that you want to move data around. Um, so like, let's say we want to push information into easy links, right? This is something we are, we are, we are doing. So we're pushing data, we're working on pushing data into easy links. So click the insured clicks a button, all the information to quote goes into easy links, just like that. Now to do that, like, it's not just a technology problem where you have to build the APIs and then they have to build something usually, not always the case, but usually. But then also you have to have like some, usually like some, uh, some type of, of relationship. You've got to like talk to the vendor, right? And like, how are we going to work together and partner? So it's like, it is a complicated problem. Yep.
You know, you know, Kim, you kind of brought this up, started, is there anything else you want to say on that or anything? Are you good? We answered your, we're kind of preaching the same thing you're preaching here.
No, I'm good.
Anybody else have anything? Go ahead.
Yeah, Bradley, this is Ron Evans. Um, I'm actually shifting gears a little bit and I was kind of hoping to bring us back to the marketing side of it. Something called a shoestring budget that rings very near and dear to my heart on the marketing side. And um, I'm actually kind of teeing you up and I, I want to hear. And, um, I'm actually kind of teeing you up and I, I want to hear the story and hear the perspective for a second time. So maybe it gets through my thick skull and maybe it reaches some, um, other people. But I remember you talking about even back when you were with Alpha. So back whenever, um, you know, Portal was a dream and a thought about you just hammering out Facebook posts and like, you'd have like these cool, like eloquently like laid out posts, you know, like 12 people saw that. What the heck, you know? And then all of a sudden you had a relatively ridiculous one that you kind of got made fun of. But it somehow led to, um, that aha moment, I guess, at Pizza Hut. One, I was kind of hoping you could, one, share that story because I think that's a, that's a gem, um, or a taco. But, um, another thing, kind of talk to that, because I know we've got agents on here that kind of run their own Facebook pages, along with people that are starting their agencies.
You know me well. Uh, so, so yes, so the story he's talking about is one, and I'm not sure exactly what you're teeing me up for, but I'll hit a couple of things. One is when you're posting online, and I'm specifically talking about organic, okay? The mistake a lot of agents make and a lot of people in general make is they make it their goal to sell something. Okay? Post this post, someone's going to see it. They're going to reach out and they're going to buy something. When you make that your goal and that your intent, you're going to come across as salesy, you're going to come across as spammy. What your goal should be, is it should be to garner engagement. Likes, comments, shares. People should see it and they should engage with it. Okay? Because what happens is after a while, they build up, see Scott, they, they, you build up this engagement, you have the same people engaging with your post over and over and over and over and over and over. And you built enough online equity with them that either they eventually reach out or you can reach out to them. And if they say no, it's okay. It's not right away, you know, everybody knows that person that you accepted their friend request or you sent them a friend request and you immediately get a notification asking you to like their business Facebook page, right? Don't be that person. And so you should build that engagement. And when you get that engagement, you have to engage back. And what he's referring to is I used to be so frustrated because I would, I was like this, like little kid 10 years ago, and I was just trying so hard on Facebook. And I would get no engagement. Every single time I got three engagements. I got my mom, my dad, my grandmother, every single time. And I would see like a local, you know, dry cleaners, they would post something stupid on Facebook and they would get 35 comments. But they wouldn't reply back to any of them. So if you get engagement, you have to engage back. I reply back even to the spam. The spam, uh, like the, you know, the people on Instagram that, that's like, hey, would love to collaborate. And you can tell it's a robot. Because what happens is when you get engagement on your post and you don't engage back, you are telling the Facebook algorithm or the YouTube algorithm or the LinkedIn, or whatever platform you're on, you are telling that algorithm that you don't want more engagement. That's what you're telling it. So what it's going to do is it's going to put your content in front of more people who aren't going to engage with it. So what happens if you engage with it? They're going to put your content in front of more people that are going to engage with it. And then the second thing he was talking about is I, you know, a big fear, I think a lot of insurance agents have is worrying about what their peers are going to think of them. You know, if I'm going on here every week and talking about whatever on Facebook, they're going to make fun of me behind my back. Yeah, it's going to happen. And what happened to me is on Cinco de Mayo, this is like eight years ago now, on Cinco de Mayo, I posted a picture of a taco on my face and said, we need to taco bow your insurance. Not saying that's a good marketing strategy, but that's what I did. And I had two of my counterparts at Alpha literally say the word idiot to my face, talking about that post in a joking kind of way, but it still kind of stung. And so I was kind of feeling down on myself and like, well, maybe this isn't, this isn't, um, you know, this isn't the right thing for me, duh, duh, duh. And so the following Saturday I went to the office, was working, ordered a pizza. The lady at Pizza Hut, I didn't call from the office, the lady at Pizza Hut saw my name and said, oh my God, you're the, we need to talk about your insurance guy. Can I get a quote on my insurance? So this stuff works. And that was all the validation I needed because I was like, wait a minute, those two guys are literally never going to buy insurance from me ever. Why do I care what they have to think? All that matters is what the market thinks. And same with Making the Donuts. I know there's people right now that make fun of me behind my back, especially here locally, other insurance agents for doing Making the Donuts. Last week I had a carrier rep for a carrier we don't recommend, we don't recommend, a carrier we don't represent, walked in this door and said, I wanted to introduce myself. I'm a big fan of Making the Donuts. We don't have you appointed right now. I want to appoint your agency. Is there any other validation that you need as an insurance agent than accomplishing the hardest thing it is to accomplish as an independent insurance agent, getting direct appointments than from a piece of content from a YouTube video that got only 800 views?
I think one of the biggest things is that people need to understand that, yes, you're in a business to sell insurance. And yes, you want all the new customers that you can get or the new carriers or whatever it is. But people enjoy social media posts, I think, that makes them realize that you're just a person, you're a real person. You're the one that's, you're working your fingers to the bone, but you're a real person and silly things happen. And, and you get a lot of engagement from that kind of stuff because they don't feel like you're just pushing, hey, call me for your auto insurance or call me for this or call me for that, because they realize that you're just a real person trying to do your job, you know, to raise your family and whatever. And it, and people enjoy personal posts, I think, personally.
Yeah. And kind of to, to feed off of that, and I think Bradley for, um, introducing me to Mike Lewis, with Archibald Lewis Insurance in Indiana, in some little small town. Well, he does something weekly. He does a bad dad joke of the day. And it's absolutely hysterical. If you haven't checked out Mike's stuff, he doesn't get a ton of traffic, I guess, or engagement, um, on LinkedIn where he shares it. But he does really well on Facebook and Instagram by sharing those, um, so much that when he went to a restaurant, he was telling me the story, um, on an episode I recorded with him. But he went to a restaurant and on a Friday night they were busy and someone came up to him and said, oh, you're that bad dad joke of the day guy. Not, hey, you're that guy from Archibald Lewis and Insurance. And he goes, two days later, Mitch, the lady called my office and I quoted her insurance and wrote it. Like that's the type of stuff that everybody, myself, Heath, Bradley, um, Hanley, Kath are all trying to preach is, you know, be authentic and just be yourself when you're creating something. It might suck to you. It might look bad at first. Like I was telling Heath, he was trying to be Mr. Perfect on this introduction video that we've been working on. You know, just do it because it's going to get better. You're not going to be perfect at the first, first point. Hell, I look back at my stuff when Bradley first told me to do what I, what I needed to do. And I was embarrassed, like go back and look and I was like embarrassed at how terrible things were. But there's a reason for it. And then you don't start now, you're going to be left behind.
You know who creates that content for Mike? This guy right here.
That's, oh, he does it too?
No, he, he does Mike's content.
Oh, he does. I didn't realize that.
Quick question. Bradley, you said, do you have a hard stop here in a few minutes?
Yeah, I gotta go, guys.
I do. You got, you got a minute or two or are you out like right now?
I got a minute, I got a minute or two. I can, I can, I can let, I can let my progressive rep wait on me.
There you go. Um, so quick question that came into a text just now that I wanted to ask you, um, with, um,
Ooh, text. It must be a good one.
Yeah.
Hey, by the way, if you guys want to text me, two five of one, two, three, seven, nine, three, eight, three, please text me.
Boom. Mic drop. So, uh, with LinkedIn, uh, with the new one that came out Clubhouse, Facebook, all those things, where are you seeing the most, um, hits, the most comeback? What's the exact question? The best results from which platform? And how do you approach each one of them? Cause I know they're all different.
Depends on the result. If you're asking insurance, if you're asking personal brand, whatever, um, right now, if I could be anywhere in the world, if you made me get rid of every platform, um, I would have a hard time getting rid of LinkedIn.
That's, that's.
And it's because everybody, most people, not Heath, but most people are using LinkedIn the wrong way. They're going super salesy with it. They need to go super personable. I can go super personable and it, it works out. The organic reach is phenomenal. You know, podcasting would be number two, if you consider that a social media. I'm bullish on Clubhouse. I'm supposed to be doing today, I'm not a hundred percent sure if we're going to be able to do it. If you are on Clubhouse tonight at five central, so six eastern, I'm doing a Clubhouse talk with, uh, Phil Treadwell from, uh, he's a, he's a thought leader in the mortgage industry. Ricky Carruth is the number one insurer, insurance, number one real estate agent in Alabama. He's got like 250,000 followers on Instagram. And then Gary Vaynerchuk's sister, who's a big time Realtor, us four are doing a chat on Clubhouse tonight. And if you notice, I'm, I'm on there with a bunch of Realtors, right? Is that going to benefit me as an insurance agent? Yes. Cause other, other Realtors, you know? So I'm bullish on Clubhouse. I think it's, I think it's, it's, it's basically Twitter with voice. Obviously I'm big on voice. I'm bullish on that. We'll see where it goes, you know, it's, if it sticks around or not. So that's kind of, that's where I am now.
So LinkedIn, Clubhouse, um, but you're still.
But you don't be married to one. Like, don't be, you know, like, you don't have to just be married to one, you know, if, if, if LinkedIn could change their algorithm and I could change my mind tomorrow on it, you know, it just, it doesn't. And other people, you know, other folks that are big on social have said that too. That's not me copying them, but it's just, you know, you just use what's available to you.
There you go. All right, guys. Any last question? Kevin Kuhn, Kim, anybody? All right. Bradley's out. Hey, thanks a lot, Bradley, for jumping in and hanging out with us today.